Okay, we're not. Alrighty. Being the hour of nine o'clock, I will call our meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Bobbit.
Here.
Ron.
Here.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Pat, would you lead us in prayer this morning?
Yes, yes. Our dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the many blessings. We ask that you guide and direct us as we go through our agenda today. Help us to make the right decisions for the county as a whole, for all the people of Grant County. We ask that you keep our, all of our employees safe as they go through this week with the heat and everything. Help them, help them stay safe and return home to their families safely. We ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Max, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Yes, I will. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We got our new windows in.
Yeah.
I know, how about that?
Yeah.
Yeah, Scott said, just as, they've got them all lettered and whichever one they deliver that day is
What goes in.
what they replace, yep.
I acknowledge that the agenda was properly posted in accordance with the Open Meeting Act.
Awesome. Consider an act and approve on the minutes from July 2 regular meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
You know what, I'll second that.
Hess moved, Ron seconded to approve the minutes for July 2, 2018, regular meeting. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously. Comments from the public? None. Item A, transfer of appropriations. Do we have those?
Yes. And this is for the, is it SIG or CIF account?
Oh, yeah.
And we have to go ahead and pay the whole bill?
We need both of them. We'll have to, both be paid.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, we got that one in, so, and I copied what we did last year.
And then we transfer back.
Yeah, so.
Is that the only one? Or do we need one for the SIG?
Today, we will need one, but she didn't get the bill. This is SIG and then she, we'll do SIG when she, she didn't get the bill.
Oh, you haven't got the bill.
We haven't gotten the invoice on it yet, so.
So, we'll do it next week.
Yeah.
So, this one is how much? The total bill for this is $78,419. This is all paid out of County General, Cindy. These are both, we went through this last year. These are all paid by County General.
Right, and, so, taking it out of contingent, we just don't have enough money.
So, you're, oh, excuse me, so you're just lacking $23,409. I got you, I understand. Okay, thank you very much.
No problem.
So, we're short in that.
And I just printed last year's. Last year, we were short like $21,300.
I got you, alright.
So, it was comparable to what we were short last year.
Short last year, I see, okay. And the second one is, is that the Lamont Fire Department is requesting $2,638.09 to go from their MNO into capital outlay. And then they are requesting $40,586.01 to go from their rural fire department MNO to capital outlay. So, what is the difference?
What those are, what those are is that, and that you'll see it in the POs.
Okay.
The billing from Henry and Hodges.
Uh huh.
And so, I just
Split them out so you can track them.
Yeah, and I'm doing it the exact amount. You know, at first Alex said, well, just transfer so much. And I said, why don't we, if we're taking it from MNO to capital outlay, let's do the exact amount of the invoice.
And then we'll try to track it better.
Then we can track it better. So, those are the invoice amounts.
Okay, got them.
This is the 6% for the construction manager and then the other is the invoice. And they are signed off on by everyone, you know.
I move to approve. Check both transfers.
Ron moves, Hess seconds to approve the three transfers, two from the Lamont Fire Department and one from contingency to County General. And please have the minutes reflect exactly what those are.
Sure.
All in favor?
I see, did Hess second?
Yes.
Yes, he did. I'm sorry. Uh, Bobbit?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously.
Cindy, we need to change this date from June 27.
Yes, yes, let me change that.
Chair about to throw me.
Made it without.
Mindy, that happened to her twice last week on the same day. And she came in saying, I rolled out of bed last night. And I was, I said, what is wrong with you?
It's a sign, I'm gonna quit. Thank you.
While you're doing that, I'm gonna print out the minutes.
There's these transfers.
Okay.
Hello, I promise only once so I can go print out the minutes. I know, okay, thank you, bye bye.
See, we need a motion to review payment of purchase orders and travel claims.
Aye, so move.
Aye, so second.
Hess moves, Ron seconds to review payment of purchase orders and travel claims. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously. Thank you.
To review the POs.
Okay. I can sit here and pretend like I know what I'm doing.
And you do.
Don't we all? There's a PO.
Max?
Yes.
Do you remember, I can't remember, the state auditor inspectors where we pay the treasures audit. You know, we only pay so much for the audit.
Yeah.
And that's a part of it. So, when we get the bill for the rest of it, it's just the balance. Is that not correct?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct. That's the way I understand it. Okay, Cindy, here's one that you're gonna have to have double signatures.
Yeah, I enjoy this.
Fine, fine, fine.
Oh, boy, thanks.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Agenda down to oh, oh, huh? Oh, 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 oh.
Any idea for Indy's disposal when Ringwood disposes of?
Well, it's, uh, for Holly Fire Department.
Trash.
It's a trash service.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. I hadn't remembered seeing that.
Yep, they get one about every month.
And Pat, you need to sign.
Oh.
Cindy, here's another little group.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. 500 business cards.
That's big. Isn't, don't we have a stamp that we could put here, the stamp on that?
Yes. Yes. Should be in the door, I think.
Do we have somebody, Cindy, that's gonna be able to sign for?
Um, I'll, I'll make sure and get people in to sign.
Okay.
I mean, if you if I have to, if I have to travel to have them do it, oh, well, I'll meet them or whatever.
Okay.
We'll make it work.
Those fuel getting charged, sure is.
Yeah.
Six and cents and three cents pro tax. I'll pay for the teacher's prices.
I'm talking about our fuel.
Oh, our? Yeah, well, we're, you know.
We don't want to pay for that.
For you. I'm good.
Yeah, Medford and Ponkreek have to give that teacher pay raise too. They don't, they don't get a way to fund it.
Cindy, what is this web posting? GrantCandyOK.org, or, ours is GrantCandyOK.com.
They've got a lot of
Well, like, we have our emails.org.
That's emails.
Oh, these are emails.
Yeah, that would be emails.
Okay.
The sheriff and her and
Well, it's a web posting.
I, I think the sheriff's office has his own website.
Oh, oh, that is, that's, that's the email, though, through Stoles.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's the one he was saying that Brandon should have, and I kinda sent out a snip email to him and then because they had only sent us an estimate, not an invoice. I said, we don't pay off a estimate. But it, it has to do with the, it's the email is what it is. Because when our email was down, that was why he was there. Because that hundred thirty-two dollars was never paid. And, and so then I said, I can't believe, that's when, I think I sent you all that email as well.
Thank you.
Rest of the case. We've got a lot of stuff to do.
Cindy, this should come out of, that's on the, that should come out of the RIVL account.
Oh, okay.
And also change the account that comes out of, that should come out, is that out?
Oh, that's, uh
So, I, I would not sign that up there.
Okay.
That would have to be Robin, so.
Okay.
Let me mark my name out, an initial that I, yeah.
I'll just do that. And so, it needs to come out of that visual inspection.
Uh huh, yes.
That one's to me, so it's no biggie. We'll wait till next week.
Well, you can
No, it's no big deal. It's I'll start using my T card for that, though.
Well, then you've still gotta make sure it comes out of the right
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cindy, we probably oughta have a, another contract with, on our elder remittances to, uh
I had called them about.
I think that's fiscal year and not, I don't think it's a
That's what I'm gonna plan on working on this week, is contracts.
Yeah, you got plenty of those.
Yeah. Yeah. That's, that's my project for this week.
Before the end of the day, you'll have more projects.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
I didn't know our NOTA dues were higher than our county ACCO dues.
Really?
Yeah, our, our ACCO dues are 3,000 and our NOTA dues are 3,500 dollars. And we probably need, make sure we've appointed Max to that board. I don't know when we do all that again.
To the NOTA board?
Yeah, on all the boards. I don't know if that's, do we do that once a year? I don't
I'd rather do them all at one time.
I think we do those calendar year, don't we?
Are they calendar? I couldn't
I'll look, I'll check on.
That sounds right, Pat.
I think it is, too.
I think you're right.
Pass them over there, I appreciate it, thank you. Cindy, I, I had Jenna keep Jeremy's unused check.
Okay.
We haven't got his clothes back yet.
Okay, okay. So, you'll let us know when it's available to release?
Yes. And I told him before he left that he had to bring his clothes back and we went to release his check.
Right.
Donna's gonna have a check with the clothes guy to see how much his is.
Okay. Okay, yeah, just let me know.
Okay. Well, we got a lot of Kilpro things coming through today.
They want the money, I guess. End of the fiscal year.
What did I miss?
Missed signing that right there.
Oh, what did? Oh, 'cause I put that
Oh, 'cause I put that.
Yeah, we know we signed one place.
Yeah. One thing at a time. Going back, huh?
Yeah. I e-fold it. Should I sign the rest of it?
Oh, okay. And I did that one, too?
No, no. FYI.
I didn't know if that's one either one of you signed it when it came through.
I didn't see it.
Oh.
It must, was it attached to something else?
Well, it was behind me, I guess, kind of.
Cindy. Pat, there wasn't anybody in there when I just went over there, but Pat's out there and helping for everybody. I don't know what this other one's all about. I was gonna ask her, but she on vacation, by chance?
In here. I just saw her a few minutes ago.
She's here.
Give me the buzzer over there.
Yeah. Well, I walked over there knowing they weren't in there.
Hi, it's Cindy. Pat had a question on a PO, I think, is robbing around or... Okay. Didn't have her come in, he had a question. What PO?
Um... Dollar general.
Dollar candle?
$41.93.
$41.93. Okay, thanks, bye. She'll send her in. She finally, she said, okay.
Even though we printed paper checks, the rest of the stuff, like to the credit unions or...
None of that's gonna go direct deposit. They're gonna have to take it to their bank. But probably if it's a credit, like Bank Seven has an app that you can just take a picture of the check.
Yeah, that's where my banking is.
Yeah.
Well, what I'm saying is then, if you have a pickup payment.
No, that didn't affect it. You still took care of all, everything that was taken out and paid it. All your deductions.
Oh, all the deductions, yeah.
Deductions and your insurance.
Yeah, we're just, it's just what goes to the employee is only in paper.
Okay, that's what I thought.
The rest of it's electronic, yeah. Yeah. Any of the auto debits or anything like that or transfers, they'll go.
Yes, would go ahead and go through just like, and they will go through on the temp.
They should, yes.
Do you know what that would be?
That?
Yeah.
Uh, could be, it's probably Scott's birthday card. Do we need to get rid of that?
Yeah, we probably can't pay that.
Okay. Yeah, we usually buy those.
Yeah. And I, I mean, like the candy, I saw it was out, you know, for everybody.
Yeah.
So how do we do that then? To take that dollar off?
I mean, are you okay with me just let she has having to do an adjustment anyway? So we just lower it?
Yeah.
By a dollar?
Yeah, 'cause we just encumbered $40 and we didn't spend that, so.
Gosh, spilled coffee on my shirt.
Usually spill more than that.
And that is not over.
Well, I was down at my aunt, I was down at Peyton's and I can hear my glasses on, I saw this bottle that said lotion. So I put on, oh, that smells really good. I thought it was kind of sticky and she goes, Grandma, that's for your hair. But it still smelled really good all day long. And I tried to, I did kind of solve it.
Betty, you wanna sign these up here?
Not pickling.
She goes, Grandma, that's for your hair.
Now, how is it on that revolving fund? Is that 5% one time?
3%.
3% one time?
3% one time.
And then they scatter that out over the duration?
I mean, it's equal payments.
Yep.
And Betty has been providing the AM schedules. She can't do them until after they, she gets them on the system. And I'm giving them to Desi as well.
Was that the only question?
Yeah, that's the only one I had. Thank you.
Uh-huh, you're welcome.
Cut all the fun you can stand. Oh, yeah, she was on vacation. She's got, she's got desks full of stuff, probably.
Okay, Cindy, you added a dollar here.
'Cause that's the adjusted amount. We're paying 2367, so we're gonna adjust it.
65, yeah.
Or 65. So we're gonna adjust it back up, 'cause we're paying less than, 'cause they encumbered 4, what, what, what they encumbered, $50?
Forty bucks.
Forty bucks, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I just.
So that's the adjusted figure.
It just, this was, this huge amount was, this was a dollar more than what this.
Right, because we're adjusting it back. Because we're putting a dollar back into the fund.
Okay.
Because we're only gonna debit 2365 instead of 2465. Okay. And I'll try to get that little worksheet that I was working on to kind of explain when to encumber. I'll try to get that pumped out this week.
Okay.
Hopefully, we're gonna clear up that, most of that other stuff today and get back on track. All right. Stayed on feet, better.
Okay, this report to the excited board, up or down from last year?
What's up?
That's what I was thinking it was up. No, that's okay. I had asked her about that before and she gave me kind of an idea before, so.
I just saw district attorney. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, that's the new computer.
Didn't sign it, huh?
Yeah. We already got it.
Yeah, why do I need to sign it?
Yeah. Possession's nine tenths of the law.
Thank you. Okay. Now, I wonder what I did with my... Cheek and Desi brought me. I did, I did, I did.
We can't pay that yet. That is for July and August. We haven't even done August, so. Don't pay prior to.
Yeah, yeah.
You're gonna have to hold that till end of August.
Did we do, did we make a motion on transfer of appropriations?
Yes, I moved you seconded.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
And then you moved and I seconded to review POs, right?
Yes.
I'd like to make the motion to take a couple of minutes recess.
I make a motion, we recess.
Second.
Hess moved, Rock seconded to take a recess, all in favor?
Bob it.
Aye.
Rock.
Aye.
Hess?
Aye. Motion carried unanimously.
Oh, we might want to put the word in recess. Oh, we might want to put the word in recess.
Okay, now you are.
I make a motion. We come out of recess.
Second.
Hess moves, Ron seconded to come back in regular session out of recess. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
All eyes. Motion carried unanimously.
I've been looking at my bid. Ow! Lot of difference.
Yes.
Yeah. But... We'll discuss that when we get down to it.
Yeah.
I've got a... We didn't get it... We had received a bid this morning from a vendor and we called him. And they faxed it to me this morning. But the date on the returned fax is eight oh two. And I'm supposed to have the bids by eight o'clock.
Ow.
So... I may have to rebid it.
The one that came to my shop at six this morning?
At six this morning?
Six this morning.
Yeah.
So it came... If it came to you at six this morning?
No, well, I don't know which... Again, it was... See, I didn't even open it or anything.
Yeah, it was a bid.
The technicalities kill us sometimes, don't they?
Well, for the difference and the... I'm gonna go back out and bid it again. Robin here today?
Robin, rap?
No, she's not. I'm not sure where she is.
What are you gonna do with all this stuff that you surplus pan? Is that... We don't need to talk about that.
I move to approve purchase orders and travel claims as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Ron moves, Hess seconds to approve the payment of purchase orders and travel claims as presented. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes. Motion carried unanimously.
I make a motion to approve blanket purchase orders.
Second.
Hess moves, Ron seconded to approve the blanket purchase orders presented. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes. Motion carried unanimously.
And this is that tour claim you'll sign there as the authorizing...
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. Thank you.
Monthly preparation for general fund rewards MO five hundred dollars, fifty percent movement from FY seventeen eighteen to FY eighteen nineteen.
This was part of our outage, so it was an account that we didn't have established, so...
Oh, okay. Alrighty. Do I have a motion to approve the fifty percent?
So moved.
Second.
Ron moved, Hess seconded to move the fifty percent movement from FY seventeen eighteen to FY eighteen nineteen for the reward fund in the amount of five hundred dollars. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye. All eyes. Motion carried unanimously.
Which I put copies on the back of your agenda.
Last week, Robin presented her assessor's report to the excise board, evaluation assessments from four seventy-two of eighteen. Just need to acknowledge that we have also received it so that we can move forward with our budget.
I acknowledge that we are seeing this abstract evaluation assessment.
Second.
Hess moves, Ron seconded to acknowledge the annual abstract evaluation assessment for Grant County for twenty eighteen so that we can move forward with our budget. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes. Motion carried. So now Cindy, we oughta be able to send everybody's budget out with the amounts that they've spent. So that they have that amount and ask them then to fill those out. And then let's try to set up a time, maybe the end of this month, to have those turned back in to us so that we can look at them.
Okay.
Acknowledgement of assessor's report to the excise board. Okay, that's...
Shouldn't they make it go together?
They go together.
Okay.
E and F should go together.
Okay.
Acknowledge of Grant County Election Board official certification of voter election held. Just acknowledge that. Penny, did you get sworn in for this year?
It's not for this year. It's next year. If you remember...
Oh yeah, you surfed till... I thought July first.
It's not...
But of nineteen. That is so...
I know, it's weird, but they don't want somebody...
I get that. I do. I get that. But that's a whole year. I mean, yeah, that's really a whole year, so, okay. We need a motion to acknowledge that.
So moved. Second.
Ron moves, Hess seconds to acknowledge the Grant County Election Board official results of votes for the election held June twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes. Motion carried unanimously. Item H, phone fax quote eighteen twenty-eighteen, District One, Ron. Ron calling.
I received two bids today. One of the bids, when I called this morning, cause I hadn't got any bids at eight o'clock, or well, before eight. Because I hadn't got any bids at the shop. We faxed two of them. We sent two of them out by email, okay? And we hadn't received anything back. So one of the bids got delivered to Cindy's shop.
At six this morning.
At six this morning. The other bid, when we contacted the people, they went back and forth and she emailed it. She emailed it to the wrong email address. We never did get it. So we called back and said, "Did you send it?" And she's... And he was driving down the road. He says, "Let me have my wife call you." So Beth Hendricks turned around and called the shop and got the right email. And when we received it, it was eight oh two AM. So it was after the eight o'clock deadline. So that being said, I want to turn down, reject these bids and go out and do a phone quote bid again.
What was the other bid? Who were they from?
The two were from B and B Equipment. That was for two dollars and thirty-three cents a mile and the...
Two dollars and thirty-three cents a mile? A loaded mile?
Yes, a loaded mile. Yeah. And the other one was for four dollars and eighty-five cents a loaded mile.
I...
From B and H Dozer. Excuse me, I didn't tell you. B and H Dozer was four dollars and eighty-five cents and Hendricks was two dollars and thirty-three cents.
A loaded mile.
I'm sure that was a mistake anyway.
I do too.
I bet they were talking running mile.
They had to be.
They probably... They could have very well been, but... And with both of them circumstances cited, I'm going to reject these bids and go out and bid them again. I know whenever you got a two dollar fifty-two cent discrepancy, that's quite a bid.
Yeah, cause Cindy and I would like to pick you back.
I'm gonna piggyback on you.
And I want ten loads a day.
I'll take twenty loads a day.
Hey, if you guys wanna do that and deliver it into my shop, that is fine.
Well, we can come pick it up. It's a shorter haul than it is to the rock course.
You guys gotta go know I've got a rock Nazi over there.
Okay, so you're gonna go back.
Here, is that your motion to reject?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Here's my report.
Hess moves, Ron seconded to reject the bids received and to rebid for the quack... Phone quack.
Phone quote? Quack? The phone quacks?
Phone fax quote.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes. Motion carried unanimously. Twenty... Item I, twenty eighteen twenty-seven Resolution to Surplus of Equipment Assessor's Office and...
That took me a little while, yeah.
And when you put it in the paper, you also have to have...
The prices.
The prices and the date. So you gotta have, yeah, the prices. And it might be just as easy to, like you did on the other things, just to put this as a document in there.
Okay.
It might be, instead of having to retype everything.
Okay.
It might be just as easy to scan it and put it in there. So and what is she doing? She's just surplusing it now?
Mm-hmm.
So just surplusing. So is it upstairs in the attic?
Yes.
I move to surplus all equipment on item I, twenty eighteen dash twenty-seven resolution.
I'll second that.
Ron moves, Hess seconds to surplus all the equipment listed for the assessor's office on Resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-seven. To include all that equipment plus the prices paid. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes. Motion carried unanimously.
I wonder if J through S can be on one motion too.
Cause they're all for the county clerk?
Yes, I don't see why they could not, so...
J through.
J through, let's see, yes. Let me just call it all the county clerks.
I make a motion to surplus...
Dispose.
J... Oh, is it dispose?
Yes.
Okay.
Wait, wait, wait. J is... Do J first.
J is surplus.
Do J and then we can do K through S, excuse me.
Okay, I make a motion to approve twenty eighteen dash sixty-eight surplus of county clerk's office and that list.
Second.
Okay. Hess moves, Ron seconds to approve the Resolution twenty eighteen dash sixty-eight Declaration of Surplus for County Clerk's Office for all the equipment listed. And again, please put the price in there. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes. Motion carried unanimously. So, okay, this is the surplus one. So you did yours correctly, where you got the price on it and all of that. She did not. We need the price on all of that.
I move to dispose of all equipment on Resolutions twenty eighteen dash sixty-nine through twenty eighteen dash seventy-seven?
Second that motion.
And these are all being junked, is that correct?
Yes. Now, if anyone wants any of the... I mean, we'll take it to the pile where... And I did send an email out to the cities. I don't have an email for the city of Pond Creek though. I need to get that.
No, I don't either.
Yeah, I had Lamont and I sent it to know that we're wanting to let the nonprofits come and look first.
And did you get with Paul to tell him what day?
He called me about dates and so... And I told him that I would get back with him, but I needed a list of the nonprofits that I could contact.
Let's start with our county ones first.
Oh, okay.
Like all the... I mean, I'd rather start with like all the fire departments and the cities and the ambulance services and the...
Yeah, I wasn't real sure who you were wanting me to go to, so that'll be fine. I'll send an email out today about that then, to all the rural fire and all that.
I mean, I guess you could even go to like, I guess there's like Wheat Heart Nutrition, which is here in Medford and Pond Creek. I don't know that they need any of that, but you might contact them. I can't think of any...
Cause yeah, Paul set up two dates that they can come and view it.
Yeah, libraries, yeah, libraries.
Okay.
Libraries, yeah. Yeah, libraries might like some of the...
Filing cabinets.
Yeah, stuff.
Those older cabinets that we have and stuff.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes. Motion carried unanimously. Churches for that, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Now the computers need to be wiped to clean.
Right. That's like why I took copy. I told the girls, I said, I want copies of those hard drives and then we're gonna, we're gonna
Okay.
Drill them.
Yeah.
But I said, then that way we have proof that we destroyed them.
That's good.
That's just a copy of the hard drives that we're destroying.
The C.
Can I make a comment? Item T through item H, H. All of this, all these different items, that was handled very, very poorly by District Three. As a matter of fact, it didn't even dawn on me on some of this stuff that we were getting rid of to get the proper paperwork. Never even, never even thought about it.
Oh.
And so I would like that put in the minutes, please, that.
Okay.
That was not proper procedure. And we have taken corrective actions within to make sure that doesn't happen again.
So you could pull out like item, these are your, so you could do all the declaration of surplus, which is a T, AA, EE.
Okay, and now, and D, item DD.
Mm-hmm.
That got, we can still surplus it, but we forgot to put it in that auction.
Oh, well, that's disposing. DD is.
Right, right. We, it's, it's, it's on a further.
Oh, excuse me.
To, uh, surplus it. And we can still surplus it because we're gonna get rid of it this fiscal year.
And you already did, didn't we already do V last week?
We did the surplus.
I got you. I got you. I got you. I got you.
That's why I say all this was just handled.
Well, so what I'll do is we just don't need to do the one on DD.
Right.
But we need to do the first one to surpluses. So we'll do no action on DD. And then when you are ready to, to dispose, we'll put it back on there.
So surplusing is TA, AE, EE, and that's it. So if you wanna move forward with.
Yes.
Those items and by resolutions.
Um, I, I so moved to surplus the following items on T, AA, and EE.
TA, AA, and EE?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second.
Rock moves, Hess seconds to approve the surplus of resolution twenty eighteen seventy-nine. Item T, twenty eighteen eighty-eight, item AA, and twenty eighteen ninety-two, item EE to be listed and surplus to include the dates received and the prices. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Rock.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. And you will also have to sign on the surplus line. Not there. Okay, yeah, that's enough. Got it. Okay, that's those done.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and these all need, these aren't all filled out because it doesn't say like who they were sold to or if they were traded.
Well, they're all junk. These are all gonna be.
Uh-uh. I don't think it's catalog or his tractor.
Oh, okay.
No, no, those are not. No. He's gonna, you need Gillian to go back to all the records.
Yeah, I think on that one, but the rest, now that's the disposing of the.
We can do the, we can do the ice machine.
There's the ice machine.
You junked it, but we need to know, okay.
Oh.
How much, okay, fifty-five hundred and ten dollars and tried to, two thousand, okay, that one's properly completed.
Okay, which, which number is it?
That's eighty-one.
And actually, these are. We're just missing on that one. These have the price and where they went.
The, oh, okay, okay.
But this one doesn't.
Okay, got you.
Let me go and make a motion on this one. Or, or, or.
Well, I was gonna say, let's see. Yeah, that's, yeah, let's get these.
On the ice machine?
Oh, yeah, okay. Oh, you want to lump these together?
Yeah, I was gonna lump them all together because these are completed. So, okay, so we've got eighty-two, eighty-four, okay, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-four, and eighty-five is completed. Let's wait till we get through here. Junked eighty-nine. Well, you can't have a name here if you junked it because it says it was transferred to Ryan Norton at Helena. You didn't junk it. And that they received a hundred dollars for it.
Yeah, yeah.
So it wasn't junked. It was sold.
It was sold, yeah. Keith James is up. I wonder if we can mark that out initially.
Yeah, you initial and I'll initial on it.
Yeah, yeah. This one was sold to Dawn Chance. Okay, the white Volvo truck. Okay, okay. That one's a, so that's eighty-nine and ninety-four.
I'm sorry, I should have noticed that.
So, so those are, and these are not.
Right.
Okay, and those need more information. Okay, so you can do those.
I move that we do disposal. I'm not gonna do letters. I'm gonna do.
Yeah, and resolutions.
Resolution two thousand eighteen dash eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-nine, and ninety-four.
Gotcha.
Oh, ninety-four, wait a minute.
I don't see ninety-four.
I don't see a ninety-four on here.
We may have to scrap.
Oh, yeah, GG.
Oh, we didn't get GG on our.
We don't have GG.
Oh, it cut off. I'm sorry.
So twenty eighteen dash ninety-four.
Yes.
Resolution to dispose. Okay, got it. Yeah, it's on our original, our copy just shut up. Okay. So that would be, okay. All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Rock moves, Hess seconds to dispose of the equipment covered under resolutions twenty eighteen dash eighty-one, twenty eighteen dash eighty-two, twenty eighteen dash eighty-four, twenty eighteen dash eighty-five, twenty eighteen dash eighty-nine, twenty eighteen dash ninety-four, including where they all went and the prices received. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Rock.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. So twenty eighteen eighty-six will be no out. We just need to sign those, sign.
So eighty-six, ninety, and ninety-one, ninety-three have no action. Ninety-five, okay.
Yeah, yeah, no action on eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-three, and ninety-five.
Eighty-six is another tractor that.
This is John DeFrennan loader for the tractor. That's the loader.
Should be eighty.
That's the loader for the tractor. That's eighty-four. That's just the loader, the front end loader. Cause you probably bought them, probably bought them separate. I had the different numbers on it.
And look at this.
Well, this is, this is wrong then because it didn't sell for fifty-two thousand, the tractor and the loader together.
Okay, well, we can't do that right now.
And one of the tractors is a seventy-two thirty and the other is a seventy-three twenty.
That's, and we can fix that because that's a typo.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that on the typo, but, but we can't do, what number was that one, Cindy?
Eighty-four. So we need to take off eighty-four from approval.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need a motion to.
I, I move to rescind.
Yeah.
The item, or, or two thousand eighteen dash eighty-four resolution.
I'll second that.
Rock moves, Hess seconds to rescind the approval of resolution twenty eighteen dash eighty-four for disposing because it is, uh, not properly documented, uh, with the tractor. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Rock.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, so I don't need to, I don't sign this one twice. I just sign one, right?
Right, right. We had to sign it when you surplus it, but on disposal, we just signed once. Yeah. Uh, and Cindy, when we get ready to do budgets, everybody needs to have their inventories up to date too.
Okay, I'll send an email out.
So that's, we always do that prior to the approval of budgets. It's next there. We got card inventories. Okay, so, so there's no action. On twenty, okay, no, okay, so twenty eighteen eighty-six, twenty eighteen ninety, twenty eighteen ninety-one, twenty eighteen ninety-three, and twenty eighteen ninety-five. No action. So that brings us down to item II.
And I had taken up, I have the copy, but Stephen, they had sent me a photocopy signature and he wants the original. So no action on that.
No action, waiting on an original signature? Okay, JJ.
Change orders. And these have been, um, and they're supporting documentation to the effect, um, from that Jim Aldridge, the Henry and Hodges, and Jim McKee, he did it like this, but his emails saying that he approved it.
All that stuff. Okay, so the change orders are.
And they're all, they're all deductions except for the last one.
So we got the.
So the first one is the deduction of nine hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Um, omitting the wall beneath the stairs in the closet, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. Provide underground electrical service in lieu of overhead service, deduct five hundred and fifty dollars. Omit the women's restroom and to use it as a storeroom. Deduct two thousand five hundred and ninety-five.
Where are we gonna go? I don't know. You're gonna come out of the closet?
That's a minute trick like that.
Well, good one.
I don't know.
Might have to go in the closet.
They were very concerned about that too. I mean, they, that one was.
Um, I don't know. It's a public building. How do you not have a, are they gonna have just a men's restroom and not, it's a public building?
Well, I mean, they're having just one restroom.
A unisex.
There has to be a men's restroom.
Yeah, it's a men and women restroom.
Okay, but how many people, but, okay, you have your fish fry or something. I mean, how many?
And their, their response to that is we will bring in porta potties. That's what they told me.
It's gonna save them twenty-five hundred dollars and they'd rather bring in porta potties for how much, over how many years?
That doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
I don't know. As a board, can we reject that?
I would think you can. I mean, you're the final.
I don't know, guys, but I, I cannot imagine a, 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 a public building for twenty-five hundred dollars.
Can we table this one until you talk?
Call. I'll call them. And, yeah, I can do that. We can approve these other ones, but as far as that one on the bathroom, I, I really cannot see for that amount of money why they would do that.
Yeah, talk to, talk to your fire department about that.
Well, let's, let's go ahead then and, uh, I make a motion to approve all the changes except the restroom.
Number three.
Number three.
I second that.
Let me make sure that none of these coincide with that, like, you know.
Affect the other change orders.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't think they do, but.
See, this one, they're adding six thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars, concrete slab, change the value engineered. They're probably making it stronger concrete, I'm gonna guess. Let's see what it says.
And I'll be honest with you, on the bathroom thing, I know the architect was not for that.
Yeah.
He was, that was the fire department wanting to take out the bathroom, not the architect.
Let me go visit with them and see what their thought process is on that because I'm serious. You're, for, for.
You can't, you're not gonna be able to get one for twenty-five hundred dollars if you go in to put it back in.
And the cleanliness and disaster recovery, you know, a warming house or any of those things.
Well, the thing about it is too, is if they have fundraisers or are open to the public and stuff, they're gonna need that bathroom all the time.
I agree.
Who's to say they're not gonna have six women join their fire department and be at a meeting and.
And how much does it cost for the porta potties?
Oh, it's eighty bucks a month.
So it's not gonna take you very many porta potties to pay for that revision.
Yeah.
That's what I mean.
Now, my question is, you talking about stronger concrete, can they, can they, uh, can they piggyback on our six-month bid on concrete pricing?
I don't know why they couldn't.
I imagine they're using, they probably bid it out to the, I, I don't know, but I'm sure they bid that out as part of a bid line for concrete.
Oh, that is, yeah, it is. There's a concrete bid line. Yeah.
Bid line.
Yeah.
But you might be able to see if it's competitive to ours.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
Because they're in our county. I wouldn't know why they couldn't go on our.
Surely, that's not just a rug district type deal, is it?
No, but I, I don't think so, but, um, I think this was a specific item. It would be like us saying, we've bid such and such, but, you know, when you bid a package, I, I don't know.
And I'm, I was just talking in generalities.
Do we sign anything, Cindy, on this?
Um, I don't.
I mean, how do we keep track?
When you can. I would say it would be best if you would.
There's a response underneath Jim's name.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, let's, yeah, let's do that.
Let me take the one we're holding and I'll make you a copy.
Yeah.
Okay, but I made the motion and we seconded, so.
Wait, okay, we haven't voted on it. So.
Right.
Yeah. So we, your motion was to approve change order one to deduct nine eighty-two, change order two, deduct five fifty, change order three, and not change order three. So change order four, deduct a thousand eighty, change order five, um, to, to add ten thousand nine oh nine eighty and forty-seven forty-seven will be taken out of contingency with additional funds of sixty-one, sixty-two, seventy-three.
Right, okay.
All in, 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 in Rock seconds.
I second it, yes.
Hess motion, Hess motion, Rock seconded. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Rock.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. And, um, I will call Jim and discuss that with him. Seven, today's the ninth.
Yes. Okay, are we ready for Stephen, it looks like?
Yeah, I think we are. Mm-hmm. Sure do.
Hi, Stephen, it's Cindy. Um, the board me, the board is ready for the affidavit portion. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Have, and the Von Winters cement, have they not, with the, with this, with the plumbing in it?
Really?
No, I mean, they haven't done, none of this has been done because the, the change orders are holding up the project. Yeah. Cause I talked to them last week.
Yeah, because you have to have the plumbing.
Well, I seen that, yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, right. Um, I've been by there and saw they had all cleaned off and they got fence all around it. And they got their equipment actually parked in the front, so you can't tree behind it.
Yeah, they got the big Henry, obviously.
I'll go, I'll go run that down today.
Okay, there we go.
I was at four, four after that, but I'll be.
Yeah, the last one was. Yeah, the last one was for the Medford Fire Department, talking about a repair on a truck.
And I think he said he didn't have that quite ready, but he was gonna talk to you about that, and they pushed that back to the city. Because they didn't, you know, they.
They didn't get a blanket.
And I've been, I've contacted them about it, yeah.
Do we have any more processes?
No.
Well, who, what can we have right today?
Smile, Stephen.
Where's that green, where's that green?
Um, you know, it just, it's getting to the point where it just hurts all the time.
Never.
Are you talking about your job or your back?
My back.
But that's not pleasant.
We, uh, Stephen, we are down to, uh, K.K., L.L., N.N., and N.N. Their affidavit for District One, Yellow House, uh, gets the first one up.
Yellow House.
Yellow House is up first. Okay. This is an agreement and a release between District One, the Board of County Commissioners, and Yellow House. That they provided services for fifteen thousand one hundred and forty-eight fifty-one, um, the charges were appropriate. And that we authorize it to be paid, but Yellow House has got to sign off on it as well.
They're gonna sign off on it too. We sign off on it first, and send it to them to sign off.
It, it's also, um, District One has to sign off on it too.
Okay, uh, right here, we sign off as the board, Max signs off as District One, and Yellow House signs off.
And then Yellow House signs off.
And then once Yellow House signs off on it, they need to bring the settlement and release back to Cindy, and then Cindy can prepare the purchase order at that point in time, based upon the settlement and release, and then attach the purchase order and sell that together, and then sign the purchase order.
Can, can I take that, after we all sign that down to them, and get them to sign it?
I don't care how it gets, I don't like care how it gets there, that's fine.
Okay, okay.
Okay, do we have any motion to sign the affidavit for District One and Yellow House?
I would make a motion to sign that affidavit.
Second that.
Hess moves, wrong second, sign the affidavit for District One with Yellow House Machinery for fifteen thousand one hundred and forty-eight fifty-one settlement, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Stephen, for.
Stephen, do you sign off of this as to, uh?
I created it, I can, I can sign off on as before, but, I mean, since I created a document, it seems kinda silly.
Yeah, it does to me, so, all right. Um, item L.L., affidavit for Grant County Expo Center regarding Pioneer Security System. This is pretty much the same type of agreement as between the Pioneer System, the Grant County Fair Board, and the Grant County Board of Commissioners, where they entered into a security system, uh, for nine hundred and ninety-four dollars twenty-one cents, and it did not have a, um, a contract in place, so this is saying that the amount was in, uh, due and payable, and that we need to sign that, so, does anybody wanna make a motion on that one?
I move to sign that affidavit.
And I did contact them and let them know what was going on, so.
So, this would be Pioneer Security Systems, so.
Right, out of Kingfisher.
Out of Kingfisher, so, Max, can you make your trek on down to Kingfisher?
I, I'll take care of both these next two.
Okay, okay, wonderful.
Yep.
All righty, um, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
Max, you did second, right?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
Yeah. Okay, all ayes, motion carried unanimously. Item M.M., affidavit for Crosland Construction Change Order O-two and/or Payment Application Number eleven.
So, that, that one and this one, they'll both have to go to the Fair Board.
Right, I'll get.
And, and run through a meeting there. So, I don't care.
Does it need to run through a meeting?
Yeah, because the Fair Board can, has to, has to have.
Has to run through a meeting there, so, I mean, you could, i- if, if it's easier, you could take it down and run it through the vendors first, and then take it back to the Fair Board, run it through the meeting, but that'll have to run through, those two will have to run through their meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so, this again is a settlement agreement with Crosland Construction, the Fair Board of Grant County Commissioners, with an amount of forty-two thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars ninety-one cents for change order number two, that was, uh, not properly encumbered, uh, how the, it is noted that the county does owe it, so.
I make a motion to approve that affidavit.
I'll second it.
Hess move, wrong seconded, to approve the affidavit for Crosland Construction, construction for change order O-two, in the amount of forty-two thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-one cents, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously. Affidavit for Mitre Fire Support LLC, Metro Fire Department.
So, apparently, Medford Fire, um, did not properly encumber monies, uh, for repair on a fire truck. It looks like the total amount is ten thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and eleven cents. Um, they've been asked to, um.
Should we sign this?
Pay for this through the purchase order process, uh, since they didn't follow the proper purchase order process, my recommendation to the county would be to decline. And then, um, it's up to them to get their attorney to do a settlement and release. We can process a settlement and release, but I don't represent the fire department, they need to get their city attorney to draft that.
Okay, I move to decline the affidavit for, or, uh, the repair to the truck, the fire truck for Medford Fire Department, in the amount of ten thousand eight eighty-one, eleven, and eleven cents.
I'll second that.
Wrong move, Hess seconds, to decline the affidavit for the Medford Fire Department for truck repairs with the amount of ten thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and eleven cents to Mitre Fire Department on the advice of our ADA, Stephen Young, and all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously, thank you, Stephen.
And so, and then, did the Kim can, did that go through today?
No, but Desi found.
I think we're gonna get that.
They found the money.
She found the money.
They found the money.
They, Kim can found the money.
Well.
Well, Desi found it.
Desi found it, Desi found it, she's got, she's talked to the, with a lady, it's called Kim Safety, uh, same address, different zip code, and they are supposed to be sending us a check back.
So they're gonna be sending the check back, so we're.
Uh, reimbursing us.
Refund it back.
Refund that, yes, and then, and so, but we, we were still, you're still running that process through?
Yes.
Is that gonna go through today's meeting?
Did you all sign?
I didn't see that.
We didn't sign it.
Oh, because we produce, duh, maybe I have it here, I bet you. Because that was how much?
That is an.
Oh, that's an old, old, oh, that's.
That's the two, two eighty-eight, okay.
But I mean, it would've be a P.O. though, I mean, it's just a P.O. running through?
Yes, should be.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it should just be.
Yeah, we're holding it, because you were gonna write a letter to go with it.
My understanding is that you guys were gonna approve that, and we were gonna, I was gonna write a letter, uh, stating that this is for all prior and past claims.
But the check back issued.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the check got.
Okay, we're, but, but the warrant's issued, but we're holding it.
Yes, I've got the warrant. I've got the warrant.
Bring that up to me, because I'm supposed to write a cover letter.
Okay, okay, all right.
All right, so, thank you.
I will do that.
Okay, no road crossings.
Stephen, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Hope your back gets to feeling better.
The way you're gonna have to live.
I'm bringing a book to read.
Um, getting some oils, we're getting some essential oils.
But, we don't need to discuss it, no.
Okay. I was gonna say something, but I didn't.
Uh, Cindy, do you have any new business?
No, ma'am.
Uh, Mac, do you have any new business?
There was a accident out at the shale pit yesterday, a couple gentlemen from Wakita were swimming out there, and one of, they both jumped in, one of them didn't come back up. And, uh, they had to get a drag team, uh, a swim team out there, and they drug, and they recovered his body this morning about seven-thirty, eight o'clock, and, uh, so that was a sad situation. We've got signs up at one driveway coming in from the south, which is our entrance, we always use. Now that the water had, had come up in the bottom, I found out from my truck drivers this morning that we're using the other driveway part of the time too, so I'm gonna go ahead and put signs on it. And the south one says unauthorized personnel, uh, you know, prohibited, stay out, uh, that kinda stuff. But, uh, the landowner has let other people go fishing in there, and there's all the time somebody going in there and cutting kitties with the vehicle and things, it's just, everybody thinks that that's public ground, it's, it's actually not. Uh, at Martha Thomas Trust, but, um, I'm gonna discuss with the landowner a little bit more about how we can keep people out, and not, we always worry about our, our equipment being in there, and, uh, we have had our equipment messed with before, it's been quite a while since that's happened, but we always take the key out and hide the key somewhere, but any, a, a lot of people have John Deere equipment.
Yeah.
And it's kind of a.
We've had a lot of problems with that too, Max, what we've done is we gone to, we, uh, got a quick connect on our battery, a lever, and we undo it, and then we padlock our hood down.
Yeah.
That way a key cannot start it, because we've had more problems in our shale pit. I think you probably need to let Dusty at our insurance know, I don't think that liability falls back on us, but I think you better let him know, as just as a F.Y.I.
I will, I will notify them today.
Yeah, and maybe even Stephen, just, I mean, he'll tell you probably just to turn it over to our insurance, but I think that, it's a sad situation, and.
It is, it sure is, they, uh, they had recovered the body, and the medical examiner, they was waiting on him this morning, so. Uh, we're not hauling shale today, we're hauling rock out of the yard and stuff, but, uh, until they get cleared out, we're not gonna go back to there, but, that was, that was a very unfortunate deal, um, outside of that, we're just business as usual.
Okay, so your comments are, business as usual?
Yes, business as usual.
Okay.
I have no new business.
Um, our National Association of Counties Conference starts this week, I will be leaving for that. Uh, I will not be here next Monday, that, uh, Max, I will not be here, I will not be home till Tuesday. So, it is, it is in Nashville, we've got over three thousand people registered, five hundred and fifty of them are first-time attendees, so, we're covering not only the, uh, Gaylord, but we're also covering, uh, four additional hotels, that's, it's a, and that's just the registered people, because most of them bring their families with them, so it is.
Okay.
It's gonna be a very large conference this year.
I, I, I need to back up to new business, there is a piece of new business, when we had our statewide meeting last month, at the end of the month, they had Cindy Byrd, uh, come speak to commissioners and to county clerks across the state, and, and I think there was a treasurer there too, Penny, that spoke about the, uh, E.T.R. funds, and the, uh, how that's handled in the county, and she says that we need to, if we get an E.T.R. fund to fund a project, we need to establish a standalone account.
We've done that.
And I know we have, and I, I brought up down there that our county clerk and treasurer have done that, have established that. But there were some other counties that are getting audited, uh, in our district, Woods County, Alfalfa County, that have been written up by the auditor's office, because it wasn't properly handled.
We're not establishing a fund?
Yes, they put the money in there, and Cindy brought up a good point I hadn't thought about, whenever the auditor, the I.R.S. looks at that, they look at total money, so, whenever you have an account set up, and you take the money out, and you put it over into another account to pay for the bridge stuff, when you get the money reimbursed, and it goes back in there, then you do a transfer and put it back over into the E.T.R. account, it's clean that way, you don't, the I.R.S. doesn't see that money that way. If you do it the way that they had been doing it, just putting the money over there and spinning it out, the I.R.S. says, well, you got two hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of money that you owe taxes on, or we owe, you know, stuff, so. Cleaner way, but anyway, I intended on telling you all that last week, and I forgot, so, that's, that's all the new business. I make a motion, we adjourn.
I second.
At ten forty-six, Hess moves, wrong seconds, to adjourn, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously.